Okay, we're gonna reconvene. Call the meeting back to order. Mr. Haas, you still have the honor here. You're on page three, Operations number fifty-seven.
You're too kind. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna withdraw actually, motion number fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
Amendment number fifty-seven, rather.
Excuse me, I didn't.
I'm gonna withdraw that.
Withdraw fifty-seven.
Yes.
Cross it out. Fifty-eight.
Well, wait a minute, Eric.
Yeah.
Why do you want to withdraw?
Based on what Mr. O'Neill said last week, or last month.
Sure.
You wanna make the motion, Urban, Mr. Urban, you can.
Yeah, I'm gonna make, yeah, I mean, I think.
Mr. Urban makes the motion, do we have a second for Mr. Urban?
Sewer bill can be reduced.
Do we have a second for Mr. Urban? Ms. Hauck? The motion is to take the twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand dollars was proposed, reduce it to ten thousand five hundred, which will result in a savings of fifteen hundred dollars. Question? Roll call.
But, Mr. O'Neill, what's the sewer bill?
I'd like to just comment on these next couple line items. Bill McIntosh actually has some very on-target numbers.
I'm gonna withdraw number fifty-seven, fifty-nine, and sixty, Mr. O'Neill, just for the record, so it might save you some time, but at fifty, I'm gonna reduce down to five hundred. I plan to make that motion.
Let's second in order, let's take fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven sewers.
Since that's what's, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, so currently, we're at eight thousand nine hundred and change, and we, sewers build out in quarters. So, the fourth quarter of 2019 will come in January of 2020, and the last, 2017 and 2018, that was around twenty-five hundred dollars. So, projecting that out, 2019 total sewer bill's gonna be eleven thousand six hundred dollars.
Everybody here? Okay. Any other questions? Motion and a second, roll call.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Ms. Wakus?
No.
Mr. Bilbo?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Three yes.
Three yes, eight no. Fails. Mr. Haas, number fifty-eight.
As presented there, I'd like to amend what's written and have the new request reflect, that is amendment number fifty-eight, thirty-five hundred dollars.
So, the motion is repairs of main pest control was scheduled to be forty-five hundred dollars. You're requesting that it goes to thirty-five hundred dollars, which will result in the savings of one thousand dollars.
Correct.
Correct? Mr. Haas makes that motion, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Ms. Hauck?
And we were, we agreed to that during our last meeting, that we didn't possibly come down to that.
Roll call.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Fifty-nine and sixty are the same numbers, Mr. Haas proposed and myself.
I'm withdrawing number fifty-nine and number sixty, and number sixty-one.
Wait a minute.
You didn't make sixty.
Yeah, you didn't make sixty.
Correct, I can't withdraw here.
No, I would, I.
I'm withdrawing number fifty-nine.
You're drawing fifty-nine, I'm trying to. My motion would be one thirty-five to one thirty, which would result in a savings of five thousand dollars.
Some of them.
Mr. Urban?
Second.
Mr. Schnee?
If, I just wanted, would like to point out, at this point, year-to-date, we're at a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in that line item.
So, you're well over your budget that you had?
We are. You're correct.
Where did you get the additional funds?
We transferred money in. I'd have to find out where that transfer came from, but we did transfer money into that account.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Five yes, six no.
Motion fails. Moving down to Operations, the next group, Mr. Haas.
Operations, that is number sixty-one, I'm withdrawing that motion as well.
Sixty-one is withdrawn. Sixty-two?
As presented.
As submitted. Mr. Haas makes that motion, do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Second.
Mr. Vog? On the question?
We had agreed that we could accommodate that.
Roll call.
Ms. Sedman?
Um, yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Very good. Mr. Haas, number sixty-three?
Sixty-three, yes, as presented.
Mr. Haas, do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Second.
Ms. Hauck?
And again, we agree that we can try to work within that constraint.
Roll call.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Number sixty-four, Mr. Haas.
Number sixty-four, I would like to present an amendment with a modification. We're gonna change that twenty-twenty requested amount to thirty-two thousand five, which would yield a reduction of twenty-five hundred dollars.
So, thirty-five thousand to thirty-two five?
Thirty thousand to thirty-two five.
Thirty-five, I believe.
Thirty-five thousand thirty-two.
Oh, oh, thirty-five on that, I'm looking at the wrong column, correct.
Is that right?
Yep.
Which will result in a twenty-five hundred dollar savings? Is that correct?
Yes, so twenty-five hundred dollar savings, yes.
Okay, that's Mr. Haas's motion, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Ms. Hauck? Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, we had discussed that, and we had talked about, we have a total of just under thirty-two thousand in fixed contracts throughout the year.
So, you agree?
So, we agree that we can work within that budget.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Yes. I had a motion there, but I will withdraw mine, go with Mr. Haas's, limited his motion. Mr. Haas, number sixty-five?
Number sixty-five, I will withdraw.
Withdraw. And sixty-six?
Number sixty-six, instead of, um, the proposed amount of twenty-five hundred dollars, I move to, or I mo, make an amendment to change it to twenty-two five, which will be...
It's two thousand five hundred dollars you're starting with.
Correct.
So, twenty-two five would be?
Should be two hundred fifty dollars in the reduction column.
So, you're going down to two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which will reduce that number to two hundred and fifty dollars in savings?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Everybody understand the motion?
Yep.
Mr. Haas makes the motion, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Mr. Perry? Roll call.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Very good. Going down to the next group under Operations, start at sixty-seven.
I withdraw number sixty-seven, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight, I'd like to change, so the change, we'll go from the proposed three thousand, the request for two thousand, change that to twenty-five hundred, which would yield a five hundred dollar reduction.
Mr. Haas makes the motion, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Mr. Perry? Mr. O'Neill, do you have any comment?
No, we had discussed that as well, and we think we can do that.
Roll call.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Haas, number sixty-nine?
I'd like to withdraw number sixty-nine.
Okay. Going down to number seventy, Mr. Haas?
Number seventy, I'll withdraw that.
Well, you have a good question on that one.
Which one?
Number seventy.
Seventy, okay.
Yeah, you're assuming that that entire one point five million has to come out of the general fund, and it shouldn't. I mean, what, what, what did the actuary say last week, or someone said a comment that, what percentage comes from the agencies, and what percentage comes from the general fund? I like that percentage applied.
Yeah. That is the amount of the general fund.
Yeah, the amount for the general fund is about seventy percent. It, the total's fourteen point five million, so that's a general fund's portion, it's a little bit less than seventy percent, and that's what I believe Mr. Stump said last week.
So, the number you have, two million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is general fund money?
Correct.
And that is the money that should be going into retirement from the general fund.
Correct.
Correct?
The other three point seven million comes from the agencies.
And that takes it up to fourteen point something.
Four point five, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Urban?
Yeah, I just want clarification on that. And then, I'd like you, Mr. Swett, to be more exact, I think, in the future, because some of those agency salaries are pretty high. I mean, you know, an estimate of seventy percent to thirty percent, I don't think that's appropriate, and, and I hope that in the future, Mr. McGinley, if you're still on the airport board, Mr. Manager will be, that you, if, if the airport doesn't want to pay, that you initiate a lawsuit against the airport, because paying into retirement fund is not optional, it's mandatory. Pull out the case in Luzerne County, where, where we filed an appeal, the retirement board did against Judge Chivarela's decision, and you'll find out that the state appellate court said, it's not optional to make a payment to the retirement fund, it's mandatory. You show that case up there to that board that you sit on right now, that, that airport board, and show them that case, and, and that case, I think, will, will force them to pay.
Mr. Urban, when you were a member of that board, did you show them the case?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
And we did.
And what was the result?
Well, we're gonna take, take it the next step.
What was the result?
Nothing.
Okay.
But, you, you're there now.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, I just wanted to know what the history was, Mr. Urban.
Yeah, but that's the history, that's the history. But, you're there now, and they owe you a lot of money, and I'd like to get that money, put it back into the fund of what they're paying. And the other question that I asked about retirement, are they in both retirement funds? And that's a question that the actuary or somebody needs to figure out, are they in Lackawanna County Fund, and is every employee in the Luzerne County Fund, and they're contributing five percent to each fund, and they're drawing two retirements when they retire? That's another question that needs to be looked into. I heard they were, but I've never seen any documentation to it, so if you could check into that. But, I believe the Lackawanna County people should be in Lackawanna's fund, and the Luzerne County people should be in Luzerne County's fund. They shouldn't be in both, so that's, I'm just giving you a job to do. I'm not gonna be here next year, but you are, Mr. Peggy.
You've been good at giving me jobs.
Yeah, you got it.
Can we stay on the minutes late? We've got a lot to do here.
Okay. Retirement amendment was withdrawn by Mr. Haas, down to seventy-one, Mr. Haas?
Seventy-one, yes, as presented.
As presented. Miscellaneous expenses that go from three thousand dollars to one hun, one thousand five hundred, which will result in a fifteen hundred dollar saving. Mr. Haas presents that.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schnee, and that's the courts, and, Mr. Shikowski, do you have a comment, please?
Yes, if I may, just, very quickly. These are domestic relation offices, and we should be aware that we get about eighty percent of these are reimbursements. So, in reality, we're also cutting eighty percent of our revenue for these line items. The first two, we have no problems with, they're really de minimis, but on the meetings and conferences, that's the money that we use to pay our law enforcement, our support officers, to go to Harrisburg for training certification. So, that, what I request, we would remain, but I just want to clarify, is we know exactly what it is.
Very good. All right, we're talking about number seventy-one, proposed three thousand, take the number to fifteen hundred, which will result in a fifteen hundred dollar savings. Mr. Haas and Mr. Schnee, any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
No.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Ms. Wakus?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Can I ask for a clarification on that? Mr. Shikowski, did you just say that if you cut these expenses, you're also cutting revenue?
Yes, by many percent.
Okay.
We'll get these reimbursed, so it's fine.
Okay. Just want to be clear. Is that only for division, or Department forty-one eighty-seven?
For these three line items, yes.
Yep, okay.
Yes, domestic relations.
It's all domestic relations, yep. Mr. Haas, number seventy-two?
Yes, as presented.
Mr. Haas makes that as presented, do we have a second for that?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman? On the question, you heard Mr. Shikowski? Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
No.
Mr. Morelli?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Ms. Wakus?
No.
Mr. Bilbo?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
That fails. Correct? Okay. Uh, Mr. Haas, number seventy-three?
As presented.
Mr. Haas makes that as presented, do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Second.
Mr. Urban? You heard Mr. Shikowski in that regard, right?
Yeah.
Eight thousand dollars to six thousand dollars, and that's used for your training, for your domestic relations officers?
Yes, for weapons training.
Okay. Question? Roll call.
Ms. Hauck?
No.
Mr. Morelli?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Ms. Wakus?
No.
Mr. Bilbo?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Motion fails, two, two to nine. Mr. Haas, under judicial, seventy-four?
Seventy-four, yes, as presented.
Coroner reports?
That's revenue, right?
These are all, the next three are all revenue items, and again, this is based on the past several years.
Okay. Do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Second.
Mr. Urban?
Yeah.
On the question?
We're okay with coroner reports.
You're okay? Ms. Hogarth? Roll call.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous? Mr. Haas?
Um, as it's presented there, the request is for six thousand dollars, I would like to decrease that to fifty-five hundred.
Go from four thousand, you would like to go to fifty-five hundred, and not six thousand?
Which would yield five hundred, fifteen hundred dollars in revenues, increased revenues.
Okay. Do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Second.
Mr. Urban? On the question?
Currently, the office is at three thousand five hundred and fifty for autopsy reports.
What's current? What date?
Last Tuesday, for last Tuesday's meeting.
Okay, so a week ago?
Yes.
So, you have a month ago in the, in the calendar year, as far as?
Right, but what happened was, last year, there was a new coroner act passed, and they increased the autopsy report fees from a hundred dollars to five hundred dollars. That, in two thousand eighteen, we had twenty-four requests for autopsy reports, two thousand nineteen, we have seven. So, we've seen a huge decrease in the numbers.
And that increase, was that the state level?
That was at the state, the, the increase in the fee was the state level.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't.
We did not do that.
We did not get any increase in revenue from that.
Right, but it drastically reduced the number of autopsy reports that we are, you know, selling to people, so I really do not feel comfortable going anywhere above the four thousand.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, from four thousand to fifty-five hundred, which would result in a fifteen hundred dollar increase in revenue. You heard Ms. Hogarth, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Ms. Wakus?
No.
Mr. Bilbo?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hauck?
No.
Mr. Morelli?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Three yes.
Three yes, eight no, very good. Mr. Haas, toxicology?
As presented.
Do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Second.
Mr. Urban?
unanimous, okay. Moving down to revenue. Next line, seventy-seven. C S C, is that Catholic Social Services?
Yeah.
And that's in the sheriff's office. Is that right?
Yes. So, the additional, sorry.
Yeah. I heard you say yeah, but I couldn't pick out, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Sorry, yes, sir. So, there'll be some additional revenue coming in and we'll cover that a little bit later in probation services.
Okay.
But, in order to cover some of the additional expenses, i.e. security for the highway safety classes, it's going to be required of the sheriff's office to provide that security additional two nights a week and every weekend at the Penn Place Building.
Okay.
So, there's approximately fifty-two thousand dollars coming in as revenue into probation and it's going to have to show up in.
Sheriff's line item.
Sheriff's line item. I don't know if Brian wants to do it as an expense reimbursement or to cover the overtime costs.
So, that's new money, fifty-two thousand, which is not.
Right, we'll see that revenue coming in.
It's in the revised eighty-five on the very last page where we put the fines, the CDC program.
The sixth page of the handout?
Yeah, the very last page, it's number eighty-five, so if they want to just skip seventy-seven, we get eighty-five there.
We have to add a revenue line for.
Expenses.
He doesn't have an expenditure line to get it out.
He needs to add expenses, so you can do it here or there, but he needs to.
We'll do it when we get to the back then.
Okay.
We have the other numbers back there.
We have the numbers back there.
Wages overtime? That's my motion, five thousand to three thousand?
So moved.
Who moved it? Mr. Urban?
Yeah.
Second.
Sir, second, Mr. Vog.
We're fine.
We're fine with that?
Yep.
Roll call.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Haas? Number seventy-nine?
Number seventy-nine. Yes, as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Second.
Mr. Urban? You have a lot of seconds in there tonight, Mr. Urban.
Yeah. You've got to move this process along now, come on.
We are moving pretty good, I think.
You are, you are. Without those seconds, you can't go anywhere.
Okay, we have the, as a result, we wrote three thousand down to two thousand.
We're fine.
We're fine with that, Ms. Holgar? Roll call.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakeus?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving down to number eighty, video conferencing, this is as a result of discussions with the courts. They propose a fifty thousand, it's going to be taken to forty thousand, which will result in a ten thousand dollar savings.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Numbers eighty through eighty-four were submitted by the court for the chairman to give to everyone. And of course, we have no objection to any of those being approved.
Okay.
Eighty through eighty-four.
Eighty to eighty-four?
Through eighty-four, well, I probably wish to discuss the revenue items, but through eighty through eighty-four, we have no objections and we actually request those cuts.
Okay.
Could you add more to it?
DA.
All right, okay, good.
Yes, it does.
It's right here in the.
Yeah, that is DA. Division twelve. Okay, let's do eighty-one, eighty first. Who's going to make the motion for video conferencing?
Some move.
Mr. Urban?
Yes, sir.
Who was second, Mr. Vog?
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakeus?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Moving down to number eighty-one, capital cases. One thirty is the proposal, one hundred and thirty thousand. New number would be one hundred and twenty thousand, which will result in a ten thousand dollar savings.
Some move.
Who made the motion? Mr. Urban, now you're moving up to the motions.
I'm moving up.
And who was second?
I did.
Ms. Wakeus?
Yep.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Wakeus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakeus?
Yes.
Ms. McGinley?
Yes.
Number eighty-two, which is arbitration. The proposed number is thirty-two thousand, the new number will be twenty-seven thousand, which will result in a five thousand dollar savings.
Some move.
Mr. Schnee? Who was second?
Urban.
Mr. Urban?
We're a team.
Did you hear that, Mr. Urban?
Yep, I heard that. I heard that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Number eighty-eight, which is examination and witnesses. The proposed number is one hundred and thirty thousand. It would be reduced to one hundred and twenty thousand, which would be savings of ten thousand dollars. We have a motion.
Some move.
Mr. Urban?
Come on, Mr. Schnee, hurry up.
Second.
Is a team member going to be second here?
He lost his chance.
Or Ms. Howe?
Second.
Ms. Howe? And a question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Ms. McGinley?
Yes.
Very good. Moving down to number eighty, video conferencing. This is as a result of discussions with the courts. They propose a fifty thousand, it's going to be taken to forty thousand, which will result in a ten thousand dollar savings.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Numbers eighty through eighty-four were submitted by the court for the chairman to give to everyone. And of course, we have no objection to any of those being approved.
Okay.
Eighty through eighty-four.
Eighty to eighty-four?
Through eighty-four, well, I probably wish to discuss the revenue items, but through eighty through eighty-four, we have no objections and we actually request those cuts.
Okay.
Could you add more to it?
DA.
All right, okay, good.
Yes, it does.
It's right here in the.
Yeah, that is DA. Division twelve. Okay, let's do eighty-one, eighty first. Who's going to make the motion for video conferencing?
Some move.
Mr. Urban?
Yes, sir.
Who was second, Mr. Vog?
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakeus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Moving down to number eighty-one, capital cases. One thirty is the proposal, one hundred and thirty thousand. New number would be one hundred and twenty thousand, which will result in a ten thousand dollar savings.
Some move.
Who made the motion? Mr. Urban, now you're moving up to the motions.
I'm moving up.
And who was second?
I did.
Ms. Wakeus?
Yep.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Wakeus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. McGinley?
Yes.
Very good. Mr. Shakowsky, you want to step up here? This is two items, eighty-five and eighty-six, which will result in increases in revenue.
Yes, number eighty-five, that is the extra three hundred and forty thousand dollars we talked about a couple of weeks ago from assuming the programs and the cost we intend to get from programs assumed from Catholic Social Services. And that's where that money is being reflected into.
Okay.
It's on the last page, so if you go to the revised eighty-five, has the, together, it has the increase in revenue in the program.
Yes, it does.
Which next is here, it's the new positions under proposed revenue for the Catholic Social Services.
Okay, then we'll do the fines at the end with the sheriff's reimbursement, et cetera. How about the expense reimbursement?
That is, we're able to squeeze out an extra two hundred thousand dollars from probation office.
Okay.
That's what we collect from them, that basically goes right to the general fund as found money.
We have a motion to make that adjustment from nine hundred thousand to one point one million dollars, which will result in a two hundred thousand dollar increase in revenue.
Some move.
Mr. Urban and Ms. Sedman? Roll call.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakeus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Moving down to number eighty-nine, other contractual.
Other contractual would be the funds that we utilize for additional grants. In essence, in order to get the grants, we need the money to spend first before we can be reimbursed. So, cutting that could be detrimental to the department.
We have a motion?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Haas? Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Sedman? Any question? Roll call.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakeus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Moving down to eighty-eight, wages longevity?
We went back and recalculated our new employees based upon their new hires and union contracts and so forth. And because of those changes, we were able to reduce that amount, which is contractual by twenty-four thousand dollars.
Okay. One hundred and eighty-six thousand to one sixty-two thousand, which will result in a twenty-four thousand dollar savings.
Present.
Mr. Schnee and Mr. Urban? Roll call.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakeus?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Number ninety-two, repairs and main software. Request was forty thousand, would be increased to fifty thousand, which will result in a ten thousand dollar increase.
Yes, the increase is due to, we need to upgrade, we want to be able to have remote access for our people in the field for probation enforcement officers. That will be for laptops as well as for internet and things of that sort, you know, remote access, basically. That's what we need to have them do.
Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Ms. Sedman, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wakeus? Roll call.
Ms. Wakeus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Ms. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. McGinley?
Yes.
Ten to one.
Ten one. Number ninety-three, other treatment and support.
All right, this is a mystery because this line item is our treatment court. And it was reduced, but I think that no one realized what the reduction actually was. And so, we're asking to restore the money for treatment court. Everybody knows what a great job treatment court does, but in the last year, we've worked hard. We've increased from about forty-five-ish average per month to now we're over sixty. So, we need to have the money for treatment court restored. And it's not an increase, it's just restoring to what it should have been from last year.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Mr. Vog? Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Any question?
How much did you spend this year?
It'll be right around two hundred thousand dollar a year we spend for the salaries and everything we have to do with that for treatment court.
Okay, is that drug treatment or?
Yeah, that's the diversionary program where people have committed, as you know, minor criminal offenses related to drugs. They're given an opportunity to avoid criminal prosecution, to go through the drug court treatment. And if they go through it successfully, their record will be asponged. And one of the bigger advantages to us is that we have sixty-two people right now in the program and that's sixty-two people less sitting in jail.
Okay, good job.
Roll call.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Ms. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you. Down to number ninety-four, which is under operations. Mr. O'Neill?
As we explained last week, these three, well, two line items are directly tied to corresponding revenues. So.
What will be the net result of those reductions? What would that mean as far as revenue?
Well, for example, under amendment number ninety-four, if we were to lower the expense by five thousand dollars, I would say we should lower the revenue, the corresponding revenue in account four oh five thirty, seventy-five hundred.
So, about one and a half times, is that what you're saying?
Well, it depends on the volume. I mean, it's not a direct.
I understand that, but roughly one and a half times?
It's actually about one, it's about one point six seven times.
One point six seven?
About one and a half times.
Okay.
So.
Knowing that, I'll withdraw from number ninety-four and I'll withdraw from number ninety-five. Is that the same reasoning?
Well, ninety-four and ninety-five are the same line item, just two suggested different amendment amounts.
Okay. Ninety-six?
Ninety-six is a one-to-one ratio with the revenue account line item four thirty-five twenty-four. So, if we lower that to twelve thousand, I would simply ask that we lower the revenue to twelve thousand. It's an in and out account.
It looks like we haven't done more than twelve thousand.
Well, we always leave that in there because there have been years where we've done up to three transfers. And that would be the cost of about three transfers.
Which would be cost, twelve thousand?
Thirteen, the thirteen nine fifty would be the cost of three transfers.
And what, you normally do two transfers then?
We've done one, it depends, it's the transfers of the farms, so it's hard to say. But we always leave that in there for one, and because it's a one-to-one amount, if we reduce it, we're going to decrease the revenue the same amount. It's going to be a net change of zero.
That's for your egg preservation program?
Yeah, yeah.
How many applications do you have in-house now?
At this time, I would have to defer that question.
If you don't know how many applications, then you probably don't have any transfers on tap.
We may, we, at this point, if, I'd have to look at the, I don't have the actual figure to date. I can find that.
Well, regardless, what you're saying to me, I think, is if we reduce it, as I suggested, by nineteen hundred and fifty dollars, we would have to reduce the revenue size by that same number.
Correct.
But if it doesn't have any applications.
Yeah.
You eliminate the whole thing. I mean, I like the farm land preservation program, I think it's a good program.
Well, it's not going to change the net, it's not going to change the net number towards the general fund, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We simply allow that in the event, we've had up to three in one year.
Had up to three, right.
Yes, we've had.
What do you have this year?
I think we may have had one.
All right.
I'm trying to confirm that. But again, if we reduce the expense, we have to reduce the revenue, the net change is going to be zero. We're not going to be, we're not going to be making any leeway as far as contributing to the.
I'm going to withdraw the proposed amendment. Going down to the next group of operations, utilities, electricity, gas and water.
We did speak about these amendments in last week's meeting, I believe. I mean, basically, with regard to the utilities in general, I would tell you that we've taken the information that we've gotten thus far this year. It was the first actual year we've been able to notice what our savings are going to be. We did drop all the utilities across the board. I would like counsel to keep in mind that we had a very mild fall this year and that can greatly fluctuate as far as gas and electricity in the spring months and in the fall months, depending upon the climate. So, I like to leave a little money in there because we've had a mild year. And if you look at the year-to-date figures, that's reflected. I mean, part of it's the energy savings program, part of it's the fact that we've contracted for electricity supply, part of it's that we've contracted for gas supply. We've done pretty much everything we could possibly do to generate savings in those categories. But I am uncomfortable cutting those figures any more than we've already cut them, simply because there's some fluctuation there that cannot be predicted.
And if you look at the numbers of usage, these numbers, proposed new numbers seem to be in line.
Well, and if counsel were to recall, we cut the budget about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in utilities from the twenty nineteen budget to the proposed twenty twenty budget. That was, management did that on its own in order to get to these specific numbers. So, in that line, we already moved forward with cutting.
Yes, we did cut them for this year and we cut them again for our proposed numbers for two thousand twenty. But again, if you look at the year-to-date figures, it may look like there's a little extra money in there, but I caution you to consider the fact that we've had a very mild fall and those numbers can be greatly affected by a cold month, especially your gas and electricity figures.
Okay. Number ninety-seven?
I'll make the motion.
Excuse me?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Urban makes the motion. Do we have a second for Mr. Urban? Ms. Sedman?
Yeah.
Any question? Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Ms. McGinley?
Yes.
Going down to number ninety-eight, I'll make a motion, but I'll have the number go to one thirty-five, which would only result in a five thousand dollar savings instead of ten thousand.
Some move.
Mr. Urban and Mr. Schnee? Any question? Roll call.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Ms. Wakeus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Anyone want to make a motion? Do we want to?
Some move.
Mr. Urban?
Yeah.
Mr. Morelli? On the question? Roll call?
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving down to amendment number one hundred, which is travel expense under the public defender's office. I'm going to withdraw that.
Well, one of the things the public defender said was his travel increased by three percent because of charging a three percent fee on the registration. There normally is a three percent fee if you're using a credit card or something like that. I mean, don't the county cut checks anymore and send them out ahead of time? I mean, why are we spending three percent on a credit card fee? Can't you get checks out in time for these people to go to training?
Yes.
You can, right? So they shouldn't be having a three percent fee added to it.
I don't recall, Mr. Urban.
I recall saying that.
Yeah, I don't, when we spoke to this last time, I don't think you...
He said costs went up the first time.
Possibly.
Costs went up because he has a three percent fee added on to the cost of training.
I withdrew it. If somebody else wants to make the motion, they may.
I'll make it.
Mr. Urban?
Yeah.
Do we have a second? Seeing none, the motion dies. Going down to operations, number one oh one, material and supplies. The requested amount was forty thousand. We take it down to a number of thirty-five thousand, which resulted in a five thousand dollar savings.
Okay, in 2018, our actual amount for that line item was forty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
So you're all over your budget for this year?
Last year. That was last year.
Twenty nineteen.
Now, 2019, year-to-date, I'm at thirty-five thousand and fourteen dollars.
Okay.
And with an estimated total of thirty-eight thousand two hundred for this year.
And this is our... Another three thousand dollars you're not committing.
We'll be a little, yeah, if we, yeah, thirty, so we'll be a little bit over. And this is based, this line item covers all bathroom paper products, hand soap, cleaning supplies.
Okay. I'll make a motion to take it from thirty thousand, forty thousand, down to thirty-eight thousand, which resulted in a two thousand dollar savings.
Some move.
Second.
Who's, who, Mr. Bilbo?
No.
Or Mr. Urban? And Ms. Sabin? On the question? Roll call?
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
One oh one, which is electricity?
Electricity.
Two thousand eighty, two thousand eight, eighty thou, two hundred and eighty thousand, excuse me, to two hundred and fifty thousand, resulting in thirty thousand dollar savings. Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Year-to-date, we're at two hundred and fifty-nine thousand and ninety-eight dollars, with a projection for end of the year at two hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand dollars in a month?
Uh, about twenty-five thousand. We're at two fifty-nine, and we're going to project to be at two eighty-five, about twenty-six thousand dollars a month.
Okay.
And at this time of year, the lights are on longer for the outside lights and all that, so it usually goes up a little more at this time of year.
Do we have a motion? Withdrawn? Gas, one oh three?
Gas, currently, let's see now, where are we at here?
Twenty-five is the requested, thirty, twenty thousand is the proposed new amount.
I believe we can live with that.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Some move.
Mr. Urban, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry? Roll call?
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Got ink.
Thank you.
Moving down to one oh five, no, excuse me, water, right? Moving down to one oh four. The requested amount was thirty-one thousand. The new amount would be proposed to be twenty-five, which resulted in savings of six thousand.
Okay, last year, we were around twenty-nine thousand, twenty-eight thousand dollars. This, this year, to date, we're at twenty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars, with a projection at twenty-five thousand five hundred. Some move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Mr. Haas makes a motion to take it from thirty-one thousand to twenty-five. Mr. Urban, you second that, correct?
Yep.
I'll make an amendment. It goes from thirty-one thousand to twenty-seven thousand.
Second.
Who seconded that? Mr. Haas? We're voting on the amendment only. The amendment would be from thirty-one thousand to twenty-seven thousand, which resulted in a four thousand dollar savings. Roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you. We have to go back to the motion now with that amendment, which would mean we go from thirty-one thousand to twenty-seven thousand, which resulted in four thousand savings. Mr. Haas, you made that motion. Are you making it with the amendment?
Absolutely.
Mr. Urban, you made the second. Are you making that with the amendment?
Yep, second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you. Going down to the next line item, one oh five. Ms. Houck?
This was to not add a custodial position. Looks like you made the same amendment.
Okay, yes, I did.
So this is again, council is...
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I got excited there, sorry.
Mr. Urban, okay, now.
On the question?
Yes, sir.
How many custodial people and how many buildings do we have?
Bill?
Mr. O'Neil and Ms....
How many, how many buildings and grounds custodians do we have, and how many buildings do we have?
For cleaning purposes, am I correct?
Eleven. Eleven, add the records building to it. And we have total, I have a total of twenty-two people. That includes mailroom and secretary.
So you actually have twenty-two?
Total.
Actual, but twenty actual workers as far as out in the building doing the work?
We have, we have a plumber, we have an electrician.
Yeah, but they're doing work in buildings, right?
Administrative assistant. So out of that twenty-two, I would say eighteen are allocated for custodial work, clean.
And how many positions are filled?
Seven, twenty-one.
Twenty-one of the twenty-two.
Twenty-one of the twenty-two, so you still have a vacant position.
Right, we're in the process of filling that. That would be filled, except we had to modify the job description for that position. It hadn't been updated since the early nineties. That's the only reason that there's been a delay in that process.
And, and the actual floor space that needs to be cleaned at that building is five, six hundred square feet, right?
No, they're averaging twenty-two thousand feet for...
But that's, that's, I'm talking about the space that people use, the...
Public space.
The public space. We're not talking about the whole building. I mean, nobody's going to be climbing up on rafters.
Oh, no.
No, I'm talking about the, that new, the new building.
Oh, the new building, yeah.
Yeah.
Talking about the corner's access, you're talking about the pub...
Public access, I would say that's probably about, at least, I'd say twenty-five to thirty percent of the public building.
So if you look at it this way, you can either pay the custodian to go down there, like I said last time, pay the custodian and then put him in the car, drive him back and forth, and pay the overtime to go forward, pay the contract sixty-two hundred dollars to get this thing done, or add a position. If council has already made a decision on they don't want to do the contract, I would hope that you would support this custodian. If, in the alternative, I would hope that you would either say, let's put the money back in for the contract, and then if you, if you choose not to go forward with this position, certainly the more cost affection, effective option is to keep the contract.
Can I make a wish to put it back in the contract?
You can make an amendment.
I'd like to make an amendment to do that.
First of all, my question here is, that person doesn't just have to stay down the records, retention place.
That's correct.
My question to you, are we vastly understaffed in custodial work with all, with snow cleaning, getting those sidewalks cleaned?
Absolutely.
People taking off?
Absolutely.
That's my question.
Right, when we have, like...
I know how long it takes to do the record retention, but...
Right, right.
And again, these people are outstanding. You're their boss, but you're rank and file, or second to none. And when you come in this building, they greet you with a smile. I mean, I wouldn't trade any one of them, but I think they've been working understaffed for years, and I'm recommending that we hire a custodian.
Well, we have a motion, and a second to do that, right, no, no, we haven't.
This is the cut.
Sorry. We have a motion to cut it.
It's in our...
Ms. Houck? Your motion was to cut it, and Mr. Urban supported that as a second, correct?
I just really made an amendment.
And then I made a amendment.
Well, now, Ms. Morelli, you want to make it, what's your amendment, Ms. Morelli?
My amendment is to, I think, from what I understand from Mr. Pejder, it most, most cost-efficient way is to put the contract back in for the cleaning services.
Okay, cleaning service contract?
Yes.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
And you're going to, that was sixty-two hundred dollars, is that correct? Somebody know that for a number?
Yeah, sixty-two.
Sixty-two? And Ms. Morelli, you made that motion, and Mr. Haas, did you make that second? And that's the amendment to number one oh five, correct? Everybody understand the amendment?
Well, actually, I don't think that's an amendment to one oh five. That's, one oh five is the, is the position.
Yeah.
So you're amending the other contractual services that we voted on like two hours ago.
Several hours ago, you're right.
Right, number seventeen, that's the amendment.
Yeah, how, how...
Number seventeen.
They need to be two separate.
Well, I think we need to vote on...
Yeah, we need to vote on this. We voted down, then we can make a motion to go back.
We voted down or we're drawn, right?
Okay? If we vote it up, then we don't have to go through it.
No, you're going to vote, the motion is to not fill the position, so a yes means you're not filling the position.
That's right.
Right.
Okay, everybody clear on that?
Yeah.
The motion is to not fill the position, which will result in a twenty-nine thousand dollar savings.
Okay.
All right? Houck, can Mr. Urban support that? Roll call, please.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
And Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No. Nine-two, that motion passes, so the custodial position is, is out of the budget, resulting in twenty-nine thousand. Now, Mr. Morelli, do you want to go back to number seventeen?
Yeah. I'd like to propose putting, putting it back in the contract.
Sixty-two hundred dollars?
Yes.
So cleaning service?
And I'll second that, Rick, or what was that, what amendment again?
Sixty-two.
Seventeen, maybe?
The original seventeen.
Or seventeen.
Seventeen, I believe.
To the tune of sixty-two hundred?
Yeah.
Yes.
That was, I think, the, the number scored for the contract. Mr. Morelli made that motion. Mr. Haas, you made that second, am I correct?
Yes.
So that would result, instead of going from twenty thousand, we would go to sixteen thousand two hundred dollars, which would be a savings of thirty-eight hundred dollars. Is that correct? Right, because twenty thousand was the starting number, we would go, took it down to ten thousand, we're going to put six thousand two hundred back, which would be sixteen two, correct? Which resulted in a thirty-eight hundred dollar savings. Am I right?
Correct.
Okay. Everybody clear? Roll call.
After the two thousand. Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
So what are we going to?
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Houck?
No.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Eight yes, three no. That amendment passes, so we're now, for number seventeen, we've added sixty-two hundred dollars back.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
I don't want to go back, I know we're trying to get through this. On the water, I'm just, I want a clarification on what...
Water for which?
For the, the previous, sorry, one oh four.
Number one oh four?
Yeah. We voted on the reduction to twenty-seven, I believe, to twenty-seven thousand. That passed, and then we voted on it, a reduction to twenty-five thousand, and that passed. So might understand?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven.
Thirty-one thousand to twenty-seven thousand, which was a reduction of four thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's what, that's what passed.
Thank you.
Okay? All right, let's look at the merit increases. We have several motions here. Several amendments that were proposed. Ms. Wacus? Her amendment, I don't want to speak for Ms. Wacus, but am I correct in saying that you're saying no increase?
Exactly.
Ms. Houck? Your amendment would be one percent increases, is that correct?
Yep, to cut them all in half.
Okay, and I also have an amendment there, which will reduce the merit increases by ten percent across the board. So you have three different proposals. Ms. Wacus, Ms. Houck, and myself. So let's have a motion for Ms. Wacus amendments, which would be elimination of merit increase across the board. Ms. Wacus, you make that motion?
I do, second.
Second. Ms. Sabin?
Yes.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Bilbo?
Now, that's for one oh six, one oh seven, one oh eight, one oh nine, because they're all linked together, correct?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Mr. Bilbo?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Uh, no.
Mr. Morelli?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
No.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
Four yes, seven no. Those amendments fail. Ms. Houck?
Okay, my motion is to cut the merit increase amounts in half.
And that's from one-ten, one-eleven, one-twelve, and one-thirteen?
That's correct.
Correct, so it's across the board. You make that motion?
I do.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Sabin? Everybody understand? Yes? Roll call, please.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
No.
Mr. Bilbo?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Five yes, six no.
Five yes, six no. Moving over to one-fourteen, one-fifteen, one-sixteen, one-seventeen, reduces the merit increase by ten percent. And my thoughts behind that was the fact that I felt that the vacant positions and new hired positions should not be eligible for merit increases. By removing that amount, that part of the money would not be available in the pool. Do we have a motion? I'll make the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schnee?
But by ten percent, you mean ten percent of what he asked for?
That's correct.
And, and my question that I never got an answer for is that the senior cost of living raise is one point six.
That's correct.
And he asked for two.
Right.
Right, and, and ten percent will take it down to one point eight.
That's correct.
Right, which I think is in excess of what the seniors get. So again, we're asking, we're asking the people in the community to pay more to the county employees while they're getting less. I mean, it's typical around here, typical around here. I mean, I didn't get an answer. What have you done to justify two percent when the...
Fourteen point five million dollar surpluses in the past three years provided by this management team.
No, no, not by this management team. Some of those surpluses have been provided by one-time revenues, okay?
Provided by this management team.
No, by, by one-time revenues.
You're right, Ms. Urban. We, we did nothing.
No, I'm not saying you didn't do anything. You got a raise last year, you got a raise the year before, you got a big increase from Mr. Lawton when he was here that did increase these salaries way up, you know, that made up for, for the years they didn't get raises when, when money was being borrowed to keep the building running, okay? Let me just say, you sold a baseball team, there was, there was some money there.
Correct.
You got money back from Coal Street, there was some money there. I can go on and I can go on and on about the one-time revenues that came in. So it didn't all come in from people doing things in this building. A lot of this stuff was done by people in this council and things that were in motion before we even started.
Call the questions? Yes, okay. Call the questions. Roll call, please.
Question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can I make a comment? Yeah, real quick. So again, you know, this has come up before and I understand where other people are saying, Ms. Urban, but I put this, things in perspective here. We're, I think we came in here about four million. We're talking here about $180,000 total approximately, right? So 180,000 compared to the four million hole that we're trying to cut down with everything else. And again, it goes back to, again, the point of the manager has a job here and it's his perspective to give money out here and there to certain individuals. It's not the entire county. It's certain individuals based off of their merit and to build, to get people to do their jobs. And so, you know, I don't think there's anything wrong with, if people do their jobs and giving a little bit of a raise. And let me make it clear too, if I'm not mistaken, some of these people aren't making the $95,000 that was said before. I mean, there's some low-paying positions that do a lot of work and there's overtime and doing a lot of things. So, you know, I'm all for good business and I think this helps to promote good business. And again, we're not talking raises throughout the county here, throughout everybody. This is only a portion of it and it's at the discretion of the manager, which is his job. So that's why I'm supporting him.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I wish I could agree with you, Mr. Morelli. I just don't, we don't have any money. This is not the year for a raise. I wish we had the money. I'm very proud of our, of our staff here. I wish I could agree to a raise. They do an excellent job and I know some of them are not well-paid. I know they can make a lot more in the private sector and I value their service. However, this is not the year. We have no money for this this year. So I'm voting no.
Okay, Mr. Haas. Call a question?
Call a question, yes.
Yep.
That's all right.
Do you want to speak, Ms. How?
Well, I did, but...
Oh, go ahead. We'll allow everybody else with...
You know, just to say to Mr. Morelli, the low-paying positions are not these. So, and my issue with how the merit raises were done last year is that we allocated a certain amount of money and some people got a 3 percent raise and some people got none. And it was not the low-paying positions that got the 3 percent raises.
No, I understand that.
So, you know, and you can say all you want about 3 percent raise that, you know, the money it averaged out or something like that, that he didn't overspend the total amount of it. But the fact is that it was very inequitable the way it was done. And the manager has the right to do that. We're not a salary board.
Right.
But that's my point. Every person is not going to get a 2 percent raise. And it's only non-represented people that this affects because the other people are covered by collective bargaining agreements.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, that's part of the pros and cons of bargaining units versus being in this level. And again, it's his perspective.
Right, but I don't, I don't intend to pass a pot of money for the manager to, you know...
I know, but it's, and it's the point of him managing and it's his employees and to them to get to, you know, to do their jobs and to be happy. I mean, trust me, Mr. Pedri, am I not right? It's pretty hard to get some good employees here and to keep people and we're leaving.
Well, listen, I mean, I think recruitment is difficult in this place, obviously. Obviously, we have to work with, with, you know, what we have here in the county, but as we move forward into definitely the higher department head level positions, you're looking at, you know, with the amount of media that is here in Los Aron County, that you could potentially be on the front page of the paper if you have made a mistake or even worse, just alleged to have made a mistake. You could be on the front page of the paper. And then in addition, that when we seek out a raise, a 2 percent raise, it's truly based upon merit. We're not throwing a dart at a wall or anything along those lines. Those individuals that come in, as I've said numerous times in meeting in the past, they work hard for this and they come forth. I use this as a motivator. It's one, the most difficult decisions I have to make is my job as county manager. It would be very easy for me to say, everybody gets 2 percent, let's go home. But I don't. And I, and I make sure that, I make sure that I look at every single job evaluation to that extent. So I appreciate county council in the past allowing these, these, these raises to move forward and I hope that they would support them this year.
Everybody have an opportunity? No? I just have one comment. You know, when we did this, the idea behind it was there would be annual evaluations and that was part of the reason that we put it in place and it became a responsibility of the manager to do that. So that part, I think, has been positive and effective, so. We're back to the motion. Myself and Mr. Snead. Roll call.
Ms. How?
No.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Uh, no.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
No.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Seven four. The motion carries for number 14, 114, 115, 116, and 117. Moving down to 118 under administration.
I believe you've already taken that out. That was the IT position.
That's out. Moving down to the next line, which is 119, and this is in the district attorney's office. There is currently one detective vacancy due to an unfortunate circumstance. The differential between the salary of that person and the new starting person that they went in with a detective would be $33,000. And that's where that number comes from. Do we have a motion? I'll make the motion then. We have a second.
Second.
Saban?
Under question. What, is there an urgency of filling this position or...
We don't have, we don't have the authorization on that. That's the attorney's office.
We don't have to fund it. We don't have to fund the position.
That's correct.
We don't have to fund it at all. This is, this is just taking out what, what, $33,000 out of a position that's vacant.
It's taking $33,000 out of the compensation line, which is the differential between the starting person...
Right, right.
In that, in that category and what that person was making.
But what is a starting position?
It's down to like 38,000 or something.
No, it's 46.5, I believe.
Forty-six, and this person was making $33,000 more.
So you can take 46 and 33 out if you wanted to.
This motion is take 33 out? If you want to make a second motion, yes, you may.
You're going to take an additional 46 out, right. I think we were all disgusted about the, some of the salaries and what some of those detectives make and that, that the only way, the only, the only control that we have at all is, is with the dollars, with the budget.
That's correct.
That goes in there. And then the DA can do anything she wants with the remaining dollars that she has.
Once we turn the budget over to her.
Right, exactly. So I'll make a motion to amend that.
Make the motion to what?
Amend it to take the additional 46,000 out. So it'll be for...
So Mr. Urban makes a motion to take 46,000 plus 33,000?
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
Which would be 79,000?
Yes.
So is this to not fund a detective?
She can do whatever she wants with the money she's got.
This, this would not fund the detective position.
I mean, she could get money elsewhere, what you're saying, but technically this is in here to fund that position for someone who...
When this was submitted...
Right.
In October, that was the money that was assigned for one of the detective positions. We had unfortunate circumstances. The gentleman passed away. So if you look at the salary that that person was receiving and look at the new contract, the first year salary would be differential 33.
So I'll just say this real quick with regards to the detectives and I know there's an argument out there of they're high-paid and all that other stuff and we've been, and I remember this debate back when I was on before. And I remember back when the chief of Hazleton came in and spoke very highly of what the detectives do and specifically down in the greater Hazleton area with the crime and the drugs and things we have there and the services. So again, you know, I'm all for cutting, but at the end of the day, I keep saying that we have an obligation to provide services. We have an obligation, especially when it comes to safety. And so, you know, we could easily say, go find the money elsewhere, but I'm in full favor of doing what we can for the safety of this county and I think detectives is, they're definitely one component of that. So I won't support that for that, for those reasons.
Mr. Urban made the motion. Do we have a second for Mr. Urban?
Second.
Ms. Saban?
I just wanted to make a note of, you know, we all, we all do look at the detective salaries and go, oh, that's a nice salary. And most of them have, many of them have left police jobs, getting a pension there, then they got a big salary here. And I'm just thinking if, if a certain amount of money doesn't come through, I mean, she has grant money too for, I think, two detectives, but that was the drug task force. And I'm just thinking, maybe some, maybe some of the detectives will retire. If they see they're not getting the money, they could retire and that would solve a lot of problems. I mean, I love the detectives. I work with them, they work hard, but you know, there's, there's special reasons that I just would not give them a raise.
Okay. So the amendment is to take $79,000 out of that line item, which will result in $79,000 savings and the adjustment from 822, 978, reduce that by 79,000. So it'll be what? 743, 978, I think? Everybody understand?
Yeah.
Any questions? All right, it's the motion then to remove 9, $79,000, which will result in $79,000 savings. Mr. Urban and Ms. Saban are the motion and second. Roll call.
Mr. Morelli?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Six and...
Five yes, six no. Amendment fails. Going back to the original motion made by myself and Ms. Saban, second, to remove $33,000, which will result in $33,000 savings. Under question?
Yeah, I mean, I don't understand that, you know, everyone, not one person on this council voted to accept that collective bargaining agreement. Not one person that detected this collective bargaining agreement. I think it went arbitration, the first one, and, and it just, it just went into, went into play. Now, I don't understand why members of the council won't vote to reduce the budget. I don't understand. You didn't accept the collective bargaining agreement including Mr. Morelli. He was here at that, that first. Why? Why? I mean, that's the only option you have is to reduce the money. That's all, that's all, that's all you have.
I think you made that argument.
Yeah, I did. I'll make it again.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
We're voting on removing $33,000, which is the differential between the salary. Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. How?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Adams, okay. Moving down to number 120. This is across the general fund. There's advertising and multiple budgets in multiple departments. The total is about $28,000. I'm saying that we should reduce that by 25 percent, which would be $7,000 in savings.
Mr. McGinley, earlier tonight, council decided to not support a reduction in the elections advertising budget.
Right.
So that would reduce the $7,000. If you took 25 percent off everybody but elections, that would reduce the $7,000 number down to $4,000.
No, that election budget was a separate line item.
It was election advertisement.
Yeah.
Right.
It was a $12,000 number. If you take a quarter out of that, that'd be three, three, seven minus three would be $4,000. I just did math in front of an entire room. Just want everybody to be aware of that.
Did you pass?
I think I hit, I think I nailed that one.
What did we end up with the elections? What did we...
We said that was, we didn't touch it. We kept that $12,000. We kept that $12,000.
We kept that $12,000. Okay, so if you, if that's the case, you're looking at 28,000. If you take the $12,000 that we left in election, that gives us 16,000 among the other advertising budgets. One quarter of that would be 4,000. Correct? Everybody okay with that? Mr. Pedri, is that all right with your math?
Works with me. You want, you want it just that way, that's fine. I'm not going to double, I'm not going to press my luck here.
Do we have a motion to take the advertising budgets and all the other line items with exception of the elections? That will total around 16,000. We're going to remove 25 percent, which would be $4,000 savings.
Present.
Mr. Snead?
Second.
Mr. Perry? Under question? Roll call.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Or Mr. Perry? And Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Thank you. Moving down to 121. Mr. Vog?
Yes, so there have been, as we all know, four road and bridge positions open for more than six months. The salary is not where it needs to be. No one's going to apply for those positions. I'm proposing we eliminate two of them and I've been going back and forth all night and I think I want to add it to the reserve fund, the 78,000. So eliminate two road and bridge positions and add that money to the reserve.
Everybody understand the proposal? Mr. Vog is going to take money out of the road and bridge, Division 50, which would equate to two positions, approximately $78,000. And that money that is being taken out of that line item would then be transferred to the reserve. Mr. O'Neil?
Well, I'd just like to speak to that briefly. We have had trouble filling those positions. That is obvious at this point in time. However, I would like to mention that we have a large, large obligation in taking care of our roads. I think we all here know how much work we have ahead of us, how much progress we've made the last two years in reducing the number of complaints that have come into not only our office, but the county manager's office. One of the things that we have been doing until we can try to fill those positions is we have been transferring those funds so that we can get assistance. But we use that from other contractual...
Okay.
And that's all, that's not, that's not how we utilize those funds. These, these are a separate, a separate issue.
And I will say, that's, that's why I support a merit increases. You guys have been working for two employees, so say, take the raise and eliminate positions.
And you want to transfer that monies?
To the reserve fund, correct.
To the reserve. So it's still in the budget?
Yeah.
It's not the taking out of the budget. It's still in the budget, just moved to the reserve item.
Correct.
Everybody understand? Mr. Vog, you make that motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second? Mr. Bilbo? Under question?
Under question, so if there is a need to fill those positions down the road...
Yep.
We could move that money.
Yeah, you have it in the reserve.
So what I'll do, what I'll do is if, if the department is fully staffed, I'll come back to council and I'll say that we are now fully staffed. Can we add these positions back into the budget?
Yeah, that's why I don't want to eliminate it, just put it reserved just in case.
That'll be the plan.
If we fill the two open positions after that, then we'll know that we need another position.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just think the long-term strategy too, Mr. Chair and everybody else, is that, you know, obviously, we had this debate, Mr. Schnee was very vocal about it too. It's very hard to raise a family on 20,000 or 30,000 with new salaries.
30,000 is a salary.
I saw that in the position budget, so again, perhaps a less employees more to get individuals to come in. And you can survive on, on a salary like that because clearly you get what you pay for and unfortunately, that's just the way it is.
It's very hard.
So that's, that is my question though. What happens now with the position budget? Are we removing two positions from that position budget?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right.
With the option of adding one or two in at some point?
Well, if you move the money to the reserve, the money's in the reserve.
Okay.
The manager comes back and makes a request.
We have it.
Then you could take the money back out of the reserve and fulfill that request if you so desire.
Yeah, I would just say I'd rather have the money in an emergency situation.
Good idea.
Okay.
And Harris, I just want...
Mr. Vog made that motion and Mr. Bilbo, second.
Yeah, I just, I just want to comment, you know, and it is very hard for the public to live $33,000, $35,000 and pay all these bills that they're paying, you know, rainwater bills, school tax bills, county bills, and they all go up.
I agree 100 percent.
I talked to somebody today and they, their, their social security went up, Medicare went up to 145, they got their raise and they end up with nine bucks a month more. And he says, who's going to take the nine? The school district? The city? The county? Who's going to take the nine? Who, who do I share the nine with? I mean, that's the reality of what we have here.
Dave, I spent four and a half hours trying to get that way down for people.
That's, that's the reality. Well, they should have came in here in the first place. I think my, my comment to Mr. Swets back in June was, you know what the revenues are? Divide those revenues among your departments and have them come in with a budget that's balanced, not, 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 and I, I hope that maybe the next council will, will submit that in writing and get a vote of that to the manager, that this is, this is what we expect from you, is a balanced budget based upon the revenues that are coming into this county and not a, not a budget that's $5 million more.
Okay. We have a motion, Mr. Vog, second by Mr. Bilbo. Roll call.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you. Going down to 122. This is unemployment compensation. We had gotten a email from C cap indicating there was a change in the rate. Everyone got that email. The change in the rate will should result in, we anticipate a $200,000 savings. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's a general fund.
Okay. So that's where that number comes from. Do we have a motion? Mr. Snead? Mr. Urban?
Yeah.
Question? Roll call.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?[1412.73]
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeve?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
The last item on this page, 123, codification. Mrs. Crocamo was in contact with the people who have done in the past, anticipated $3,000 expenditure, correct?
That's the number that he gave me.
Yeah, so that would be $3,000 that we would put into the council's budget to provide for that codification to be completed. Do we have a motion? Mr. Sneeve?
Second.
Mr. Bilbo? Under question? Roll call.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeve?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving to the last page. Never thought we'd get there.
I am, I am probably, this is probably just a bad, because I have no head for math. The thing on the workman's comp or the unemployment compensation-
Unemployment.
The 200, 200,000. Would that have parentheses around it as a refund or?
We have it in there.
You have it in there?
Actually, the negatives are increase in revenue. We're taking it out of the tax increase, though, or potential tax expense. So yeah, we're not, we're not adding to it.
I mean, I just, when I, when we take all the numbers, I'd like to make sure that's in the right column.
You notice we have Mr. Swetz sitting there, so Mr. Pedder.
I need him too.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we're going to the next page, debt service.
We did everything but 85.
That's, the debt service is complete?
Yep. Yep, we did 18, 19, 20.
Very good. Video conferences, we did that?
Yep.
85. This all resolves around the Catholic Social Services, correct, Mr. Shkowsky?
Yes, those are the numbers we discussed previously. It are just in a different location. But it does include, the only change there is this includes the cost of the positions that would be hired to fill those positions for those programs. And also, as you see, the money that is left, we earmarked for the sheriff's office, for his costs and who have the experience in doing this.
Correct.
It's a net result of, it's a neutral result of the budget.
For that particular item?
Yes.
Thank you. So we do all three together or you want to do them one at a time?
All three together.
All three? Who wants to make a motion?
So.
Mr. Morelli?
Second.
Second, Ms. Haas? Questions? Roll call.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeve?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Swetz, number 91?
Got that one.
We're done with that?
Yep, we have 119 as well.
And we're done with 119?
Yep, Mr. Vogt was 120. We're done, right?
Advertising, we're done with?
Yep, advertising, UC CAS, so it's 123.
Okay.
And that's for the DA.
123 is what?
That's for the DA, for grants and for her positions related to Catholic cultural services.
So we need a motion?
Yep.
Number 123?
It's revenue.
It's a grant?
Present.
Second.
And we'll do the two together. Mr. Sneeve? And second was Mr. Vogt? Under question? Roll call.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.